Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December 14, 2021, City Council meeting, our final council meeting of our sitting counselors. January 1 starts the new council moving forward and the new administration. So this evening, in the interest of the government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the city council, and according to open meeting law, since this meeting was posted by as a Zoom meeting, this meeting will be recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the city council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you're watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications and the public hearings to be recognized to speak. Let me see if we get Jamie on the call here. Nine seven nine, we do, I'm gonna promote Jamie to a panelist. Jamie, can you hear me?
Yeah.
We have Jamie, thank you. So in attendance tonight.
And I see Senator Tara is on your attending list as well, Mr. President.
Yeah, I'm gonna bring him in also.
I also see Representative Ferrante is here.
All right, so we may have a quick, we may have a change of plans for this because Bruce and Margaret are here to do certain things. So let's see here, so in attendance this evening, I'm going to start from my upper right left hand corner and work to my bottom right hand. In attendance, we have Counselor Cox, we have Counselor LeBlanc, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor Peck, Counselor Memhard, Counselor Gilman, Counselor Nolan, and Counselor O'Hara. Also in attendance this evening, we have Senator Bruce Tar, we have our state representative Ann Margaret Ferrante, we have our city auditor Kenny Costa, and we have our DPW director, Michael Hale. And let's see here. So Madam Clerk, we have our first order of business, please.
Are you going to announce something first?
Yes, I want to announce we have our acting Cao Christopher Sicarenza is also with us this evening before I forget. And this evening, we are, before we get the meeting going, let's see, again, so Mary Ann, for some reason, I promoted you to a panelist, so if you want to just kind of hang out with us for a little while, you're more than welcome to. So this evening, we are going to announce a couple of things. So people that are on the call don't have to sit around to the public hearing part of things. So the first public hearing for, let's see here, I'm gonna find it. Well, I'll defer to Counselor Memhard for us because he's got his up and running.
Thank you, thank you, Council President, for a little while longer. On the agenda for tonight was a public hearing concerning proposed parking restrictions on the northerly side of Farrington Avenue, that's between Stewart Avenue and Edgemore during the summer when it's used for resident and non-resident parking for Niles Beach. I've asked that this be sent back for further reconsideration by our ordinance administration committee, the minutes from the previous traffic commission meeting on this matter were not available at the time that they met, and I would like to have it sent back so that we can give it a little more thorough vetting and have more community input. There was some misunderstanding about it, and I just think it's important that the public process be followed carefully and we'll have a chance to participate.
Thank you, Scott. And also, I'd like to announce that a public hearing 2021-032, the zoning dimensional requirements is going to be continued for the building height in excess of 35 feet is going to be continued till January 25, 2022. So anybody that's here for the meeting of, for the public hearing for the dimensional requirements in Farrington have, we are going to continue one and refer one back to ordinance and administration. So you know, you don't have to be with us the whole meeting if you don't want to be. With that being said, Madam Clerk, can I have the first order of business, please?
First order of business is oral communications.
All right, does anybody here that would like to speak under oral communications, please raise your hand and I will recognize you to speak.
Dave, I did have my hand up, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, I have you as a panelist, so name and address for the record.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, 93 Mile Pleasant Avenue. I just wanted to take a moment to say that I appreciate the council maintaining the Zoom format for the last few months. I'm very immune compromised, and it has been very, I'm very appreciative for it. And I also wanted to take a moment to say that I've learned a lot. I've attended quite a few meetings, most of them. And while I don't always agree with the votes taken, and I've challenged a lot of you for most of these meetings, I just want to say overall, I want to thank everybody because without resident participation, it just, it just seems like everything would just go through and/or would just be the council that makes the decisions. And it very much needs to be all of us together, and I just wanted to say thank you. And I, and I hope you, all of you that are leaving the council really enjoy your time off, and thank you, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mary Ann. All right. Anybody else that would like to speak under oral communications? If you're calling in, you can press star nine. If you're watching, there is a raise hand button to request to speak to be recognized. Oral communications. All right, seeing none, we'll move forward. So before the meeting started, we had a really quick discussion, we're going to be giving out citations this evening to the counselors that are no longer going to be with us next year, and we thought it was going to be a good idea to put them off to the end. But we do have our Senator Tar here, and Ann Margaret is here also. I'm sure they have a million things to do this evening than to sit through our maybe two hour meeting, so we're going to proceed with the citations. So we'll do our council citations first, then I'll hand it over to Senator Tar and Representative Ann Margaret Ferrante. So I'll call on Counselor Cox for the first citation.
All right. Thank you. Be it hereby known to all that the City of Gloucester Council hereby commends Counselor Stephen LeBlanc Jr., whereas the end of the 2020-21 city council term means that Stephen, the Counselor Stephen LeBlanc Jr. will no longer be serving as an elected official in the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of the city council, deem it fitting and proper that there be inscribed upon our records our appreciation for the dedicated and invaluable service of Counselor LeBlanc. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for his 10 years of service as a counselor and our appreciation for his accomplishments while serving on this body. Furthermore, we also take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester for his dedication, dedicated years of service. Wherefore, we find that whatever the future holds for him in public or private life, we know that the experience he has gained in the council will inspire him to even greater efforts for Gloucester. Signed on this 14th day of December 2021, the rest of us, not you.
Thank you, Melissa. So I figured Melissa and I, the two longest standing counselors, so I figured we'd go first. Thank you, Melissa, I appreciate it. I'm going to read Melissa's now. So Gloucester City Council Citation, be hereby known to all that the City of Gloucester City Council hereby commends Counselor Melissa Cox, whereas at the end of the 2021 city council term means that Counselor Melissa Cox will no longer be served, serving as an elected official in the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of this Gloucester City Council, deem it fitting and proper that there be inscribed upon our records our appreciation for the dedicated and valuable service of Counselor Cox. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for her 10 years of service as counselor and our appreciation for the accomplishments while she's serving on this body. Furthermore, we also take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester for her dedicated years of service. Wherefore, we find that whatever the future holds for her in public or private life, we know that the experience she has gained on the council will inspire her to even greater efforts for Gloucester. Signed on this 14th day of December 2021, Ward One Counselor Scott Memhard, Ward Two Counselor Barry Peck, Ward Three Counselor Stephen LeBlanc, Ward Four Counselor Val Gilman, Ward Five Counselor Sean Nolan, At Large Counselor John McCarthy, At Large Jamie O'Hara, At Large Jennifer Holmgren, and At Large Melissa, well, Melissa doesn't sign her own, so that being said, Melissa, you've done a great job over 10 years and looking forward to private life. Next, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call on Counselor Gilman.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I have the honor to give Counselor John McCarthy his citation. Gloucester City Council Citation, be it hereby known to all that the City of Gloucester City Council hereby commends Counselor John J. McCarthy, whereas the end of the 2020-2021 city council means that Counselor John J. McCarthy will no longer be serving as an elected official in the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of this city council, deem it fitting and proper that there be inscribed upon our records our appreciation for the dedicated and valuable service of Counselor McCarthy. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for his two years of service as a counselor and our appreciation for his accomplishments while serving on this body. Furthermore, we also take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester for his dedicated years of service. Wherefore, we find that whenever, whatever the future holds for him in public or private life, we know that the experience he has gained in the council will inspire him to even greater efforts for Gloucester. Signed this 14th day of December 2021, Counselor Memhard, Ward One Counselor Stephen LeBlanc, Counsel President, and Ward Three Counselor Sean Nolan, Ward Five Counselor Jennifer Holmgren, Counselor at Large Barry Peck, Ward Two Counselor Val Gilman, Counselor Vice President, and Ward Four Counselor Melissa Cox, Counselor at Large, and Jamie O'Hara, Counselor at Large. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Next, I'm gonna call Counselor Nolan.
And this goes out to Jen Holmgren. Thank you very much for everything you do for the city. Be hereby known to all the City of Gloucester City Council hereby commands Counselor Jennifer A. Holmgren, whereas the end of 2020-21 city council term means that Counselor Jennifer A. Holmgren will no longer be served as an elected official in the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of the city council, deem it fit and proper that there be inscribed upon our records in appreciation for the dedicated and valuable service of Counselor Holmgren. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for her four years of service as a counselor, our appreciation for her accomplishments while serving on this body. Furthermore, we also take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester for her dedicated years of service. Wherefore, we find that whatever the future holds for her in public or private life, we know the experience she has gained in the council will inspire her to even greater efforts for Gloucester. Signed this 14th day, December 2021, Scott Memhard, Ward One Counselor, Stephen LeBlanc, Counsel President, Ward Three Counselor, myself, Counsel Nolan, John McCarthy, Counsel at Large, Barry Peck, Ward Two Counselor, Valerie Gilman, Counsel President, Vice President, and Ward Four Counselor, Melissa Cox, Counsel at Large, Jamie O'Hara, Counsel at Large, and thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Up next, we have Counselor Memhard. Nope, you're on mute, Scott. Scott, we can't hear you. That a boy.
Want to hear me as well?
We can read your lips because we've already read it a bunch of times, but we're good.
Yeah, I tried to pull it off silently.
Thanks.
So I was saying that last, but certainly not least, this is for Barry, be it hereby known that all the City of Gloucester City Council hereby commends Counselor Barrett S. Barry Peck, whereas the end of the 2020-21 city council term means that Counselor Barry Peck will no longer be serving as an elected official in the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of the city council, deem it fitting and proper that there be inscribed upon our records our appreciation for the dedicated and valuable service of Counselor Peck. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for his two years of service as counselor and our appreciation for his accomplishments while serving on this body. Furthermore, we take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester for his dedicated year of service, years of service. Wherefore, we find that whatever the future holds for Mr. Pet in public or private life, we know that the experience that he has gained in the council will inspire him to even greater efforts for Gloucester. Signed this 14th day of December, all the rest of us.
Thank you, Scott. And before I hand it over to Senator Tar and Rep. Ferrante, just one more city council business, we'd like to give a citation from the city council to Mayor Taken, and this city, this citation goes to Sepatia Ramay taken, whereas at the end of the 2021 term means Mayor Sepatia Ramay Taken will no longer be serving as an elected official for the City of Gloucester. Therefore, we, the members of the city council, deem this fitting and proper that there be inscribed upon our records of appreciation for the dedicated and valuable service of Mayor Taken. Wherefore, we express our sincere gratitude for her years of service as a city counselor and as mayor, and our appreciation for her devoted skills and energy for the City of Gloucester and the people of Gloucester. Furthermore, we also take this opportunity to express our gratitude on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester and for her dedicated years of service. Wherefore, we find that whatever the future holds for her in a public or private life, we know that the experience she has gained as an elected official will inspire her given great, given greater effort to the City of Gloucester and signed by the entire city council. So Mayor Taken, thank you, we know you're not here this evening, and we wish you the best, and this is our gratitude from the city council to Mayor Taken. At this time, I will hand it over to Senator Tar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and through to the members of the council, and thank you for this opportunity for the legislative delegation to join with all of you in recognizing our colleagues on the city council and our mayor who are leaving these roles very shortly. And, Mr. President, I want to take the opportunity to say thank you to all of the members of the city council. Representative Ferrante and I very much cherish our working relationship with all of you and the partnership that we have to be able to work on a whole variety of issues that affect the community and in turn, in getting your advice on issues that affect the entire Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And because we have the friendships and the partnerships we do, I believe we are more effective for the people that we collectively represent. And so we too appreciate the opportunity to say thank you to our departing council members and our mayor. And so we also have citations, and I'm going to read them in just a moment, and I'm going to try to so that we economize on our use of time, read one of each and then list all of the names so that we can move forward in an efficient way. But I want to make a point that being a city counselor is a particularly important job, and it's a job where you wind up dealing with a variety of complicated and sensitive issues. It takes much more time out of your life than just a few hours, maybe many more than that on a Tuesday night. It is much more than that. You are the face of municipal government, you are the people that get called, you are the people that spend time on subcommittee meetings and doing research and on-site visits, and you have to have a tremendous amount of commitment to serve on this council. And I know oftentimes that means sacrificing other parts of busy lives, and it also means sacrificing being away from family and friends to be able to serve the community and to be able to make Gloucester stronger and better and more prosperous. And I think particularly, it's important to remember that you have all been leaders in one of the most challenging times in the history of our lives and certainly in the history of the nation with regard to the COVID-19 pandemic. It has been uncharted territory for all of us, and we have all had to work together and pull together to find the very best within ourselves to be able to move forward and address things from making sure, making sure that we had good public health situations in Gloucester, that restaurants were able to survive, and the special accommodations that you made for them have been important, and retailers, and making sure that we continue to support our employer community and the employees who are so very important. And all of you have done that. And again, there's been no roadmap, and we have all had to find our way forward, and this council has done that, and it's also done that with Mayor Taken at the helm as our mayor. So I want to express my gratitude for all of the time and the energy and the effort and also the compassion and caring that you have given to our community, particularly at this most challenging time for Gloucester and 350 other cities and towns all across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is not lost on Representative Ferrante or me, the amount of sacrifice and the amount of commitment and the amount of service that you have given to our community. And for those that are departing, we want to say thank you in particular and know that we look forward to continuing our friendships and our relationships with you. And as the council citations noted, we know that you will all continue to contribute to the community in one way or another, and we want you to know that we stand ready to continue to work with you and support you in those endeavors and, and continue to be partners, even though the official relationship may be changing. The unofficial relationship and the friendships are not. And so we do have citations, I'm gonna read one, and I'm gonna show you what they look like. I wish that we had a connection where I could just feed this through the computer and you could each receive it, but we'll make sure to get these, if it's okay with you, Mr. President, to Joanne, to our city clerk, in the hope that they can be appropriately distributed to the recipients. But these, thank you. These read as follows. From the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the State Senate, official citation, and they read, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Jennifer A. Holmgren, to John J. McCarthy, to Barrett S. Pett, and to Stephen LeBlanc, in recognition of your years of dedicated and committed service as a member of the Gloucester City Council. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the Senate. And just as your council citations noted, we wish all of you the very best for your future endeavors. And these are signed by our Senate President Karen Spilka, they're attested to by Michael Hurley, and I am proud to offer them along with all of my Senate colleagues on December 14 of 2021. Now, Representative Ferrante and I also made a request, and the request was enthusiastically granted by the governor and the lieutenant governor, so we also have for you citations from them, and they read from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, again, to John J. McCarthy, Jennifer A. Holmgren, Barrett S. Pett, and Stephen LeBlanc. These citations which read, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your years of dedicated and committed service to the City of Gloucester and the Gloucester City Council, given this 14th day of December in the year 2021, by Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and Karen E. Palito, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Now, Mr. President, we also have similar citations for our mayor, which read, in recognition of her service and her dedicated and committed service to the City of Gloucester in the office of mayor. We have those from the Massachusetts State Senate and from the governor and lieutenant governor. I know that Ann Margaret is going to, in just a moment, present hers. So before I hand it back to you, Mr. President, I just again want to say thank you. This is probably the last time we will all collectively talk before the holidays, and so I also want to wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season and a happy and prosperous New Year.
Thank you, Bruce, and we appreciate it. And I don't know if it was just you overlooked it or you don't want Counselor Cox to step away from her role as you missed her twice.
You know, I don't know how that happened, but I appreciate the reminder, and it was, no, it's just hard to believe that Counselor Cox is leaving the city council. So let me also say that, you know, we also have, and I'm trying to find it in my pile here, and I apologize because I'm trying to shuffle a lot of paper here, but also, let me see, I know I have it, I know it's here.
I don't want you to get a paper cut, I think we're good.
No, Melissa, I want to make sure that I, you know, so just, I think you were actually the very last one that I did not get to, and here we go. So you get a special reading as a result of this. So be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its congratulations to Melissa Cox, the Gloucester City Council, in recognition of your years of dedicated and committed service as a member of the Gloucester City Council. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby extends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by our clerk. And again, this is signed by our Senate President Karen Spilka, attested to by our clerk, proudly offered by myself on December 14 of 2021. Now, in the next citation, Melissa, when we went to get this from the governor, it took a little bit of time because he said, no, she's not leaving the council, I don't believe it. No, no, she actually is. So on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from Melissa Cox, on behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation in recognition of your years of dedicated and committed service to the City of Gloucester and the Gloucester City Council on the 14th day of December in the year 2021, by Charles D. Baker, Governor of the Commonwealth, and Karen E. Palito, Lieutenant Governor of the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Senator. I'm sorry to have missed your toy drive Saturday, but all I got to say to that is, go Navy.
Well, I appreciate that, but Melissa, in your absence at the toy drive, it was unanimously voted that if we raise enough money next year, you are going to be the designated singer of Dominic the Donkey.
There you go.
Oh, boy, I guess I'm gonna have to learn the lyrics then.
We can help with that.
You're a professional.
We have to help to make sure that she gets to sing next year, so whatever you need so much, please let us know.
Thank you very much, Steve, and again, thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight and to be taken out of turn at the beginning of the meeting and recognition of our schedules. I deeply appreciate it, and I want to make sure that we also get to hear from Ann Margaret, who I know is standing by.
Thank you. Representative Ferrante.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm beginning to think that he might have missed that last citation there with, with the intent of, he's just so good at doing these telethons and what have you, that I think he was missing the telethon a little bit tonight. And so always, as always, and I say this very affectionately, always good words from our senator. And I too want to thank you all, to you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the members of this council. It's, it's a bittersweet moment because we have enjoyed working with all of you over the years, and you know, one thing that the senator mentioned that I'd like to just echo here is that I don't think anybody could have foreseen what it would be like to govern during a pandemic, and all of you have risen to the occasion. I'm always impressed every year, each and every year, of the level of service that everybody gives to the City of Gloucester, that's an elected official, and the senator's right, it's not easy. There's sacrifice involved, there's challenges involved. Sometimes you get paid, as they like to say, the big bucks for making the difficult decision because there are people that are always on the sidelines that will say to me, and I'm sure will say to you, that they're not envious sometimes of the decisions that have to be made, and sometimes they're all good viewpoints that are brought up, and as you know, we, we struggle to make those decisions under certain circumstances. But you showed But you showed up, you came to the council meetings in a pandemic. You figured out how to put every meeting on Zoom to make sure that the public was heard through controversy, through difficult decision, through challenges, to make sure that the good work was done on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester. And as your state representative and as a resident of Gloucester, I really want to thank you for all of the work that you did, not only in these two years, but as you mentioned, Mr. President, some of you have served for much longer, and when you think about it, you mentioned that you and Melissa, Counselor Cox, have been there for the longest, at a decade, and that's a lot of service, it's a lot of sacrifice, it's a lot of meetings. And as was mentioned, it's not just the bi-weekly meetings of the city council, but it's the site visits, it's the subcommittee meetings, it's the public hearings that go above and beyond just the duties of the meetings every other week. And you did that, you put the time in. There's lots of charities that you come out to support. There's a lot of activities that you come out to support, and I just want to thank you for all of the work that you did, in addition to being city councillors, but also being good residents to the City of Gloucester. I too have citations. I'm just gonna read one and insert many names. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Counselor LeBlanc, Counselor Cox, Counselor Pett, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Holmgren. In recognition of your service to the City of Gloucester, and above all else, your love for the City of Gloucester. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. I'm sure that we'll all be seeing each other around, even if you don't carry the current title of counselor. I look forward to continuing to work with you." And it's given on this day at the State House, signed by Ronald Mariano, Speaker of the Massachusetts House, and often very proudly and appreciative by me, Ann Margaret Ferrante, State Representative. Again, thank you for having us and including us in this meeting, and I wish you the very happiest New Year and the very happiest holidays.
Thank you, Ann Margaret. And Bruce, thank you also. We appreciate you guys taking your time out, not only today, this evening, to come here and speak with us, but Bruce, the past few days, you and I back and forth, planning this to get everybody on board, and we really appreciate your time, you know, the efforts. Ann Margaret, I don't know the big bucks, because I must have missed the bus on that one, for making decisions, because you don't make big bucks on city council, but I understand the term. But thank you, guys. We appreciate everybody here tonight, and kudos to you guys. Keep up the great work, and this is our last council meeting, and I'm sure that we'll all get together after this and have a drink at some point.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We look forward to that, and we look forward to seeing everyone enjoy the holiday season and beginning a very prosperous New Year very soon in our all respective roles, whatever they might be. And we are confident and happy that our paths will cross again in the future.
It surely will. Thank you, folks. All right, Madam Clerk, can we have the next order of business, please?
The next order of business is the update from the administration on the downtime parking meters in kiosks.
All right, let's see here. John, we have our CFO, John Dunn. John, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Proceed.
Well, thank you. So I apologize for coming on in phone. I was not able to log on with my laptop. So anyway, as you all know, the kiosks are installed downtown. We are transitioning from kiosk land or from parking meter land to kiosk land. We think that this is a good choice. Unfortunately, when the project did not go along as well as we thought when the kiosks were originally ordered, there was a snafu, and they didn't come in with change meters. So we had to reorder the kiosks at no additional, except for the change meters, no additional cost to us, but somehow the original order did not include those change meters, and those kiosks could not be retrofitted. But they are pretty much installed at this point. They do work. They will accept change. They will accept credit cards. They are logged into a an app that allows you to basically go on through this app and basically, you know, put your license plate number in and, you know, update your information as time goes on. So if you're out at a particular restaurant or a particular shop, and you've only put in an hour of time, you are able to update that through that app. You know, so what is remaining on the streets are the meters and the meter heads. Those will be coming down over the next week or two, and eventually all of those meter heads will be removed, all of the posts will be removed, and that all that will be remaining on the street is the kiosks. So we're hoping that this is going to transition into something that is much easier for, you know, citizens, visitors, merchants, to be able to use. We do acknowledge that probably not every one of the kiosks is in the right place, but we'll be watching that and moving those things back and forth as necessary. There are probably, you know, 70-plus kiosks on the street. There are, you know, a small number of kiosks still over at DPW that we could move around, and we're just hoping that as we transition into the future and watch for usage, that everybody will be pretty much satisfied with how this works.
All right, thank you, John. Do you have any questions for John, Counselor Cox?
Hi, John. Thank you for taking the time out of your evening for this presentation. I know you didn't necessarily have to be here this for this meeting. We've lost a lot of revenue in the first six months of the fiscal year. Do you see that going to be a problem towards the end of the year when we're tying up revenues to match our expenses?
Well, I guess, no, I don't. We're pretty conservative in terms of projecting revenues, you know, in the budget each year. We do know that there will be, you know, some revenues that are projected that will fall short, but we also are pretty confident that there's a number of revenues that will exceed budgeted expectations. So, you know, in the end, we've been pretty good through the past five or six years of, you know, being, you know, pretty well on the plus side of the total revenues as expected, and we would anticipate that to happen again this year. Now, you know, again, there's all sorts of things that could happen. For example, you know, beach parking this past summer, you know, I think there were like 27 days of rain in July, so, you know, that's gonna have an effect. We're probably gonna lose some revenue in terms of on-street parking, but also, you know, some, you know, there's gonna be some increase due to, you know, issuing tickets. So, you know, I'm pretty hopeful that throughout this fiscal year, ending June 30 of 2022, that we'll be in good shape.
Okay. Thank you. My biggest concern with that is, you know, our typical July revenues are anywhere, July, August revenues are anywhere from $25,000 to $30,000 per month, and July of '21, we took, you know, well, for everything so far that we've got accounted, we've taken in less than $8,000. So, I mean, this isn't just gonna be a small shortfall, it's gonna be a big big hit to our revenues. So I know that you are very good at what you do as far as forecasting, but I don't think this was a forecastable event, so let's just hope building permits can carry the parking revenue this year.
Just one comment on that, Counselor. You know, what, you know, what you took a look at was really just the information from the kiosks, and that did not include the information from actually the parking meters, which were still being used. So there is still that there that is going on, so that will kind of fill in a little bit on what we're missing, you know, coming through the kiosks.
Right. Okay.
All right. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Counselor Pett, you had your hand up, and then Counselor Memhard?
Yeah, just a quick question. I'm not sure whether this is for John to address, or maybe Chris, I know he's been working on it, but when we were talking about there still being some kiosks, you know, to be placed, and some may have to be moved around, et cetera. Where should we direct our, you know, input? If we get it from citizens, or if we have it ourselves, should it go to the administration and the mayor's office? Should it go to the DPW? Where should we direct that information going forward?
So I think that information should be directed to the mayor's office. So what, you know, one of the things that we want to do is the parking enforcement people who are on the street, as well as the, you know, the person who does the collections, they're gonna be, you know, gathering some data as we move forward and be able to say that, you know, that maybe we don't need a kiosk in this place, but we do need a kiosk in another place. So if anybody has, you know, input on that, you know, certainly send it along to the mayor's office, and we'll put that together with what we're seeing on the street and try to do best we can to make sure everything is efficient.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Thank you very. Counselor Memhard?
John, and also the administration, I'd just like to thank you and express the gratitude of the citizens and the shopkeepers and the tourists coming into Gloucester, because I think this technology upgrade and the convenience of it, using credit cards and having that remote access, your telephone, is a very citizen and tourist-friendly step, and it really reflects a city moving forward. My only follow-up to that compliment would be to, you know, again, put a little tickle for our beach parking revenues being likewise accommodated with a planned electronic system that reduces the amount of cash that's handled.
And yes, Counselor, there is, you know, we're talking about plans in order to be able to do that. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Any other council questions before we move on? All right, seeing none. Before we move on with the next order of business, I just want to recognize a few people that keep coming into our meeting. Before we move on, we have our harbor master, T.J. Simotaro, I should have announced him earlier, he's been here from the beginning, our superintendent, Ben Lummis. We have several members of the Waterways Board. We have our Counselor-elect, Tony Gross. We have Mark Lacy, let's see, Karen Tibbetts. Let's see, we have we have our Counselor-elect Frank Majota, Counselor-elect Jason Groh, we have our school committee member Kathy Clancy, and we have our DPW, my go-to person, Rose LaPiccolo. So I just want to make sure we get everybody that's on the call this evening up and running. So, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please, and thank you, John, for joining us tonight.
The next order of business is the consent agenda.
All right. Are there any councils that would like to remove anything from this evening's consent agenda? Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Very quickly, I just wanted to tell you guys about a report that starts on page 70. It's for information only. It's regarding the Ad-Hoc Committee to evaluate the feasibility of constructing and assisted living residents in Gloucester to help meet the housing and care needs of Gloucester residents, and this was ordered by Counselor Gilman and Counselor Lundberg, actually in our last term. This committee plugged away at it diligently, and then COVID hit. And I have to give Sunny Robinson so much credit for continuing to keep the ball in the air. She helped us stay focused on the task, and a lot of information was garnered from the work that we did. The committee consisted of Jen Biloff, the Director of Housing and Client Services at Action, Karen Carroll, our former Health Director, David Holden, the Executive Director of Gloucester Housing Authority, Scott Trenty, the Executive Director of Senior Care, Sunny Robinson, Greg Cattamartori, our City Planner, and Rick Noonan, the Chair of our Planning Board. And we met many times, at least once a month, for almost a year. So if you are interested, please take a look. It's three pages long. It's succinct, and certainly it points to a need for assisted living residents, but perhaps different from the traditional model, which is not affordable for most Gloucester residents. So thank you very much. That is all.
Thank you, Jen. So that was for informational purposes only for the removal from the consent agenda. Anybody else that would like to remove anything from this evening's consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept it, as is.
So moved. Second?
All right, it's been moved by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Gilman, and I will ask for the roll call. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara? Jamie's on the call, so I'll give him a second to custom mute button. I'll circle back to Counselor O'Hara. Counselor Pett?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And once again, Counselor O'Hara for the consent agenda. All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one technical difficulties. Well, I'm not gonna miss the technical difficulty part of this thing. Thank God. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Committee report of December 9.
And I will hand it over to our Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
Hello, everybody. Good evening. I present to you a consent agenda for all matters that were not for a public hearing. If anybody would like to pull anything, now would be the time, or forever hold your peace. Seeing none, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Memhard. Any discussion, Counselor Cox?
On just a grant and a couple donations, so we're appreciative of all of them.
All right, any other council discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the roll. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc? Yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara? All right, I'll circle back to Jamie. Counselor Pett?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
And once again, Counselor O'Hara. Jamie, can you hear me? If you can hear me, you might want to try to call back in, and we'll get you back in, so that way. I'm not sure if you're in a bad area. You're not getting a cell signal or what, but motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one technical difficulties. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
The Ordnance and Administration Standing Committee report of December 6.
Our Ordnance Administration Chair, Counselor Nolan.
There is no motions for tonight.
All right. Madam Clerk, next order of business.
The Planning and Development Committee did not meet on December 8, so it'll be the first scheduled public hearing, public hearing 2021-032, rezoning 2021-003, in accordance with Gloucester zoning ordinance, Section 111.2, parentheses, "A. Amend Gloucester zoning ordinance sections 2.31, residential uses 3.2 dimensional table, 3.2" 3.2.2 dimensional requirements for multifamily dwellings and their accessory uses other than signs, and Section 3.1.6b, building heights in excess of 35 feet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will open the public hearing and continue this till January 25, 2022. So this public hearing has been continued till next month, January 25, 2022, for those interested this evening. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Is public hearing 2021-033, amend Gloucester code of ordinance as Chapter 22, Traffic and Motor Vehicles, Section 22-270 Parking prohibited at all times, and Section 22-291 Towaway Zones by adding Farrington Avenue northward side from its intersection with Eastern Point Boulevard in an easty direction to its intersection with St. Louis Avenue.
All right, so we had a brief discussion before the meeting, well, at the beginning of this meeting. So I'm going to hand this over to Counselor Memhard.
Thank you very much, Council President LeBlanc. As I mentioned before, there's some degree of confusion about this matter and some pushback on social media and otherwise. I know a number of you have been contacted by concerned constituents who weren't clear what was being proposed, which is a restriction of parking on the northerly side between Stewart Avenue and Edgemore. And I'm going to request, in the interest of transparency, because the traffic commission meeting minutes on this matter, which had a good public turnout at the time for the Butters and Neighbors, had not been issued, was not released, so it wasn't available for the public or for the Ordinance Administration Committee, that this matter be referred back to Ordinance Administration, so it may have a fuller fleshing out of the public's concerns and before, before a public hearing or a council vote. And that's my request.
Thank you, Scott. Joanne, do we have to vote on this, going back to O and A? All right, you want to make that a motion, you can move it, Scott.
Yes, I'd like to request that the, this said, said motion about parking restrictions on Farrington Avenue will be referred back to our Council Ordinance and Administration Subcommittee for further review. You know, so move.
All right, move. It's been moved by Counselor Memhard, seconded by Counselor Holmgren. Thank you, Jen. All right, so this is going to be referred back out to Ordinance Administration with this council vote. So it'll be completely vetted, and hopefully it comes back with different language that everybody can agree on. Does everybody understand the vote? All right, Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc. Yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara. We have Jamie. Jamie, can you hear me? All right, he's on the call. Counselor Pat?
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one technical difficulties. Counselor O'Hara is not on the call anymore. He is an attendee with us, flown on, so we can see him. So hopefully he'll get a little better service, and we'll be able to get him up and running on this meeting. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Public hearing 2021-027 loan order 2021-004 loan authorization request in the amount of $410,000 for the purchase of a new Harbor Master patrol boat. And this was continued from the November 9, 2021 City Council meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I will open the public hearing and ask if there's, so before we start the public hearing, and this is going to go for all public hearings this evening, just to set up a little bit of guidelines. The proponent will get up to 15 minutes if needed. The opponent will get up to 15 minutes if needed. If one goes over, we'll give the time back and forth to the other way. There'll be time for rebuttal, and then everybody else will get three minutes to speak after that. If it gets repetitive over the, the three minutes, we'll ask to cut back down to two minutes or one minute, so that way we can get through everybody. I'm sure that there's not a lot of people here this evening, but that's usually our rules of procedure for public hearings. So is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of this this evening? Our Harbor Master TJ Simotaro is here with us this evening. Go ahead, TJ.
Good evening, everybody. This has been in the works for quite some time now. It's been back and forth to the Waterways Board, into subcommittees, to Budget and Finance. We are looking to purchase a new patrol boat for the city. This is a long-term asset with 20-plus years of longevity. So it's not a small purchase, but it is, it is a long-time purchase. We have chosen Safe Boat International, who's kind of the industry standard and leader in building these boats. Salem just took possession of a very similar boat, the Salem Harbor Masters office, on Wednesday. They had been waiting almost 20 months for their boat due to some supply chain issues. And Marshfield is taking delivery of theirs next Friday. These are pretty standard pieces of equipment throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the whole United States. In fact, we have one very similar, the Gloucester Police Boat, which is rounding about 15 years old now, which is still in service, getting repowered. So that's just a testament to the longevity of these assets. We came out very favorably in the Waterways Board and our Ops Budget and Finance Committee. And we're looking for, you know, positive vote tonight to purchase this. It's about 14, 18 months out, is what they're telling me, by the time we take delivery of this. So this is probably not going to show up for another, you know, year and a half to two years, unfortunately. But I, a positive vote tonight will move us forward into a purchase order that we'll be able to open and get in the build queue, at least, so we can get this moving forward. The asset that we're trying to replace is, is 30, almost 30 years old. It's at the end of its service life. I don't think personally it's going to make it until we get this new boat, but there will be a gap. There, there's, there's probably going to be a gap in coverage as far as a follow-up other asset goes, but we'll work out something, maybe with a police department and an MOU type of deal for emergencies in the interim. That's pretty much all I have for, for you guys tonight. So thank you very much.
All right, TJ, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this this evening? We have our Chairman of the Waterways Board, Tony Gross. Tony, can you hear me?
Yeah, I, Steve, thanks.
Name, yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Tony Gross, 18 Nashua Avenue, Gloucester, Massachusetts.
Thank you, Tony. Go ahead.
So as TJ pointed out, this is going to be a great long-term asset for, for that department and for the city. It, we, we looked at other manufacturers, and nobody measured close to the durability, the ruggedness, and the utility of this vessel. The Waterways Board did trim the budget a little bit, but on the advice of the city CFO, he said, leave it at the 410,000 because you don't have to borrow up to that amount, but you're better off not having to go backwards and ask for more money. It's, it's better to stay where you are. So we're hoping to come in a little underneath that, that dollar amount. And, and we had, you know, lots of discussions. This is, at, at present, this is going to come out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund. Be bonded against the fund, and so it'll be no, no burden on the city budget. Any questions?
We'll get to Counselor questions shortly, Tony. We're getting to the, the public hearing part of it first. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of this? If you're calling in, you're going to press star nine to be recognized to speak. And if you are watching, there is a raised hand button to be recognized to speak. Now's the time. If you'd like to speak in opposition, you can also raise your hand at this time. Doesn't have to be in favor. It can also be in opposition. All right, seeing no one else. Hold on a sec. Seeing no one else, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are none.
All right, do we have any Counselor questions? Counselor Gilman.
Thank you. I just have a short quest, question, and that is if we are able to get the Port Security Grant in late February or early March. Are there any things that this future council needs to know about that transaction?
I, yes. So we do fully intend on applying for a Port Security Grant, which is a 50-50 match. For all intents and purposes, that's usually what it comes out to. That'll be announced in February. It can be used against this debt service for this vessel at a later date, since we're not going to take possession of it for about 18 months. You know, 14, 18 months, maybe even longer. So that'll be a 50-50 match if we're successful. That's a highly competitive grant. So we're going to bring in some outside, some outside consultants on this that we've already been back and forth with, and we've intent to, to hire. That'll be paid for, again, through the Waterways Enterprise Fund, through my budget. So hopefully we're successful. There are different the spirit of the grant each year for the, for, for Port Security Grant. So some years they fund equipment like this, some years they fund smaller pieces of equipment, some year they fund infrastructure, such as like home security cameras and stuff like that. So we'll have to wait and see, but we do fully intend on applying for this grant. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Counselor Pat, and then Counselor Memhard.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. My, my question to TJ is sort of on the same vein as Counselor Gilman in finding, you know, funding sources for some of this. I know you've spent a lot of time and effort in doing so, and I understand that hopefully this Port Security Grant will come to fruition and cut the, maybe cut the cost almost in half here. And I just wanted to make sure that we're working with our state partners and everything and trying to find ways to reduce this. I know if it's done in a bond, at least, we can continue to find ways to cut the cost. I'm totally in support of the, the need for the vessel and for the service that's provided by the Harbor Master. I'm just hoping we can cut down the long-term costs as we go forward. So I'm just asking, hopefully that you're going to continue to look at things like the Port Security Grants and other things through our state partners going forward.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Barry. Counselor Memhard.
Thank you. I'm not sure if the scope of the description of the purchase includes or does not yet include a fire pump or firefighting apparatus. It seems like this is an important, long-term asset that will play an important role in our harbor and our community for decades to come, and I just concern that it be of maximum utility in terms of public safety.
So right now, that price is less than $410,000, and as Tony just explained, the bond is for more than that. In that price currently is not funding for a fire pump. That's going to be around $60,000 to $68,000, depending on configuration. We do have plenty of time to identify more funding for this, but, you know, assuming tonight I get a, you know, positive vote out of the full council, and we are able to get a purchase order in, that's kind of when we start the design and like the, and the layout and the contracts and so on and so forth. It's about a month-ish process by the time that all starts, and we get rendering and drawing. Again, this is a purpose-built, you know, custom boat. So we do have some time to identify some more money, maybe with free, you know, free cash purchase through the general fund. I know that the Waterways Board, and I think Tony could speak to this a little more, and I believe he did during BNF, that everyone was in agreeance that the, that the fire pump isn't, is in utilized by the Harbor Master. We do have an MOU with the Fire Department. So we, we don't feel it's necessary or appropriate that the, the Waterways Enterprise Fund, who isn't, you know, we don't fight fires. Our master's office is not a firefighting agency. But I do understand your concern, and it's legitimized. You know, it is a long-term asset for the city. So some talk about it being maximized as appropriate, but it's, I don't believe it's appropriate to be paid for out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund. Additionally, fire pumps are, are in saltwater, are very arduous in maintenance. As you can imagine, valves, pumps, springs, gaskets in a saltwater environment. So there's some additional costs every year for maintenance of this piece of equipment and additional training. So some other things are going to need to be identified pertaining to that. But if that's something that the new administration would like to fund, we're obviously open to it, but it, it will not be funded, I don't believe, out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Thank you for your response, and thank you also for the thorough and careful vetting that you've presented the Budget and Finance Committee about this matter. I'm, I'm regretful that we weren't able to process it more promptly, but it's just important that we do this right. And this is, this is an important investment, but thank you for your very thorough and clear presentations.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor.
Tony, would you like to speak on this? Tony, can you hear me?
How's that? Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, sorry about that. TJ summarized that pretty well about the fire pump. You know, what we're buying is an asset for the Waterway, for the Harbor Master Department. And if you add a fire pump, then it becomes a city asset, and that includes the platform that that pump is on. And as TJ so well put, the maintenance of that, and all of that probably is not a, a proper use of enterprise fund money. So all that will need to be worked out, but I don't see any problem in working that out. It's just that those Ts need to be crossed, those Is need to be dotted. Also, you know, since this has taken a while, I was wondering if it would be, if the council would consider voting this to re, for reconsideration, so we could possibly get moving on as quickly as possible. Thank you.
All right. Any other Counselor questions? All right, seeing none. I will refer to our Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
Did you close the public here?
Let me, I was just about to do that. I'll close the public hearing and refer it up to our Budget and Finance Chair, Counselor Cox.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony, for the reconsideration request. That was definitely already on my notes to do so tonight. All right. Without objection, I'm ready to read the motion. If there's no further discussion. I recommend that the City Council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Order that the City of Gloucester appropriates $410,000 pay cost of the purchase of a new Harbor Master patrol boat, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount pursuant to Math General Law, Chapters 44, Section 7, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further order that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Memhard. Any Counselor discussion? Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, I will be absolutely supporting this. Having sat in on a few of the BNF meetings when this was being discussed, I, I totally appreciate the diligence of Counselor Cox, Memhard, and McCarthy to look very closely at the ordinance for the Waterways Board and to clearly then ask that we look at that very closely in terms of it coming out of the Enterprise Fund. And I know that that was, that was one of the reasons for the delay, but I think that it was really well worth the delay. And I, and I appreciate the collaboration with the Waterways Board and with our Harbor Master to get to where we are. So I undoubtedly will be supporting this. It's needed, and it's appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah, I too will be supporting.
Yeah, I too will be supported. I'm glad that we took the time to vet this and to get all our ducks in a line on this. I think TJ didn't mention all but the company they hired uh initially uh pointed out about five different sources of possible. Supplemental funding for this boat. I think it's important that the city look into the um outfitting the boat with a fire pump, and I think. What TJ has said and Tony has said is absolutely correct. That shouldn't be part of the Waterways uh Enterprise Fund. That should be. Um, either put into the fire department budget or um the city to maintain that pump and to purchase that pump. Um, but I'm glad we worked this out and um it is a necessary asset and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, John. Uh, Counselor Pat.
Yes, um, I too want to uh, um, weigh in and um, give my support. Um, for not only just the purchase of the asset, uh, but uh. Uh, for the work of the Harbor Masters Office and the Waterways Board. Um, they are a tremendous asset to the uh, uh, City of Gloucester, uh, not only to our citizens, but to our. Uh, visiting uh, uh tourist economy as well. And uh, I know there's been a heck of a lot of work. Uh, put into this and that they will uh continue to uh try and keep the costs. Uh, in the right place. Uh, I'm sorry that they could not find a way to uh have a special uh. Size fuel tank to be able to go back and forth between Gloucester and Florida to bring Counsel McCarthy. Up and back uh when he wants to go down, but uh I will be uh, uh, supporting this when we uh, uh, when we go forward. Uh, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Uh, any other council of discussion? Counselor Cox.
I will be supporting this as well, and um, I sincerely hope that the next incoming council. And whoever is on Budget and Finance um follows the diligence. That Counsel McCarthy and Counsel Memhard um did in my absence when I was traveling on this matter. Um, that. You know, there were some things that um I was unaware of that on a capital purchase of this size. And um, they handled it like champs while I was gone, and I, I really appreciate how they. They went through this and, and kind of pushed back against um trying to push us through, even though we, we need it. And I know there's a time constraint restriction and everything, but I think it was really important that we followed our procedure. So. Uh, kudos to them. Um, and I, I think this is gonna be a great asset, and I can't wait for TJ to take me out for a spin.
Water skiing.
I burn challenge.
Water skiing.
I'm water skiing on the back of that thing. It goes way too fast.
Any other council of discussion? Um, all right, that leaves me. Uh, I'm gonna support this a hundred percent, uh, being the council liaison to the Water, Waterways Board. Um, there were multiple meetings on this that at that level, they went back up to Budget and Finance, uh, back down to the Waterways. Um, so I'll tell you a quick story. Probably about. Six years ago, TJ, how long you been here? Six years? Five years?
Uh, twenty sixteen, so going on six years, yeah.
Going on six years. So before TJ was here, I have a good friend of mine that came up from Florida and he's a captain of a yacht. Um, not his yacht, but he's a captain. Um, he called me, um, reamed me out. There's no. Transient anything. There's, you know, people are talking on the radio that just go past Gloucester Harbor. You do not want to go. Into Gloucester Harbor. There's nothing there. There's no accommodations. There is nothing. Um, since TJ's come in, retooled the whole Harbor Masters Office. Um, where do we stand now, TJ, with that?
Um, that's a, that's, there's been a lot of work done by a lot of people. It's been a totally, you know, combined effort with. Obviously, the council, the budget, the administration, you know, dredging, governor's office. I mean, it's just been, there's been a lot of. Lot of stuff going on, but we're, we're on the map. You know, we got the new facility down there. We got a bunch of transient moorings. We got a really good rating. Uh, we've gotten a uh. Uh, yeah, Marina's, uh, marina.com Marina the Year Award, which is a top, top one percent. You gotta maintain four point five stars and better on a hundred reviews a year. Which we have. Uh, people are coming here. You know, mariners are full, yachts are coming in, lots of tourism downtown, um, via the waterfront, which is al- always a positive. Because anytime you have, you know, boaters come in and spend money in town that aren't contributing to traffic problems or parking. It, uh, you know, parking issues, which is always an issue in the summertime, uh, just a great way to, to increase tourism, support downtown businesses. And uh, and support the, the working waterfront via the, our waterfront, which was totally under, underutilized for a long, long time here. So we still have a lot of work to do, but uh, we're definitely in the right direction. Um, and you know, more people, you know, inevitably more problems, not always, but it's just the, the law of averages here, so. We're really looking forward to having a boat that can, you know, keep up with the modern times and, and deal with search and rescue or deal with taking firefighters out to Pierce Island. Which is inaccessible by vehicle or in paramedics and medicals and boat sinkings and assisting the coast guard or the environmental police or whatever the case may be. Um, it's all good stuff and it's all thanks to a lot of people. Um, so that's where we stand.
That's where we stand. Imagine that in six years, we were a drive-by community with transient boating. To a place where people want to come and hang out. So um, I'm gonna support this a hundred million percent. I think this is. Not only an asset to the city, but an asset to everybody that um, that comes to the city and is able to see that. Not only do we care about our waterfront and our watershed, but we also have a state-of-the-art boat to care for you. When you come to our, our watershed. So, uh, that being said, um, if there's nothing else, I will call for the roll call, Counselor Cox.
Just real quick, I want to throw in a, a big thank you to Discover Gloucester as well, because. They've done a really good job about promoting the city and um, the Harbor Masters Office and the fact that. You know, we were welcoming people on boats with a welcome packet that includes all the information. That you could possibly in promoting downtown and Magnolia and Lansville um as, as destinations. So it's. It's been working really good.
Yeah, it has. And um, I'm sure Tony remembers that phone call that I made to him about complaining about my buddy. Complaining to me. So we've come a long way in six years, so kudos to everybody and uh. Like I said, this is, this is the, the residence and transient. This was gonna be a, a. A jewel down at the Harbor Masters Office alongside the Harbor's Masters Office. And that's an also a jewel. Um, with that being said, I will call for the roll call. Uh, Counselor Holmgren.
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor LeBlanc, yes. Counselor McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes, thank you, TJ.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Nice to have you back, bud. Um, Counselor Pat.
Yes, thank you, uh, TJ and uh, uh, Tony and everyone else involved in, in, including the uh. BNF team in working through this. Uh, it's a huge, huge plus for the city.
Um, Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Counselor Cox.
I'd like to move for reconsideration.
Second.
All right, reconsideration's been moved by Counselor Cox, seconded by Counselor Memhard. Uh, everybody understands the reconsideration. All right, Counselor Holmgren.
No.
Counselor LeBlanc, no. Counsel McCarthy.
No.
Counselor Nolan. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Memhard.
No.
Counselor Nolan.
No.
Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pet.
No.
Counselor Cox.
No.
And Counselor Gilman.
No.
Motion to reconsider fails on a roll call vote of zero in favor, nine opposed. Um, so we have a couple. People in the audience, just to, just to clarify what a reconsideration is, we have up to twenty-four hours to reconsider our vote. And if any one of us wants to reconsider our vote, we file it with the clerk's office within twenty-four hours, and this comes back to City Council. And to, or the next City Council meeting um for discussion and a vote. Um, so what we did tonight is we voted not to reconsider our vote. So this expedites the vote without having it come back to City Council. For allowing a counselor to go back to the clerk's office tomorrow and reconsider their vote. Um, so this basically rubber stamps it saying, well, not rubber stamps it, but officially stamps it. Um, so we can move forward with this with, with a, a lot more efficiency um than waiting the, the uh, the average time to, for a normal vote. So. That's just a quick explanation to everybody that's listening this evening. Um, we also have Mayor-elect Greg Berger that's joined the call. TJ, thank you. Tony, thank you.
Mind if I just say something real quick, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Um, it's the last council meeting. Um, I'm sure I'll still see all of you out in some kind of capacity, but it's been a pleasure working with. I pretty much all of you since I started, a couple new faces here. Um, we, like, like, uh. Steve said earlier, we've, the port's been, you know, wildly successful, but it's been thanks to everyone supporting me and my team down there. I've put a lot of stuff before you guys over the past six years, ordinance changes, uh, monetary fee changes. Um, asset, equipment ass, uh, so on and so forth. It's all worked out really well. Uh, so thanks. To everybody on this call and thank you in moving forward in your, whatever endeavors there are. Come visit us down there sometime and. And now when we get the new boat, we'll go for a ride. So thanks a lot. Everyone have a great uh Christmas, New Year and holidays. Um. And uh, uh, best of luck.
Thank you, TJ, and uh, thanks for being very proactive down at the Harbor Masters Office. We appreciate.
You got it.
What you do too, bud.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
All right, and thank you, uh, Waterway Boards member, Waterways Board members for joining us this evening, and uh, I'll see you guys soon. Uh, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Order of business is public hearing twenty twenty-one dash zero three four loan order twenty twenty-one dash zero zero six. Loan authorization request in the amount of three point five million dollars for the renovation slash repair. Of the modular buildings located at the Beaman and Plum Cove Elementary Schools.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor of this this evening. Um, all right, uh, Superintendent Lummis, thank you.
Thank you, uh, City Council President LeBlanc, and hello to all the city councillors. I'm here tonight with uh Chair, Chairman of the School Committee, John Pope, and Director of Public Works, Mike Hale. Um, and if you have any questions about the, the uh dollars and cents, John Dunn will help us out as well. So, uh, as you know, uh, the city with a lot of work and support from the City Council have been working to and, and also a lot of work and. Ever from, from the DPW have been working to upgrade and maintain our facilities across our, across the city for our schools. Um, and we have two elementary schools, Beaman Elementary School and Plum, Plum Cove. Who uh are in the, you know, fifty-plus year range, which is okay, pretty okay for a human. But for a school building, um, it begins to show quite a bit of wear and tear. So we're sort of sixty-plus for, for Beaman and, and fifty-plus for, for um. For uh Plum Cove. Our primary goal at this point from the school, can, school side and also Department of Public Works and facilities. Is to make sure we maintain both these school buildings as viable facilities for at least the next ten years. Um, uh, as you have heard about for quite some time now, um, there are some, uh, the modular classrooms. That's, that's six classrooms at uh Plum Cove and nine at Beaman. That's fully at each school, half of the number of. Your regular classrooms they have. So they're, they're not just sort of add-on. They're integral, integral part of these school facilities. Uh, at both places, they're uh at or beyond their useful life. Um, something that the DPW has been concerned about for quite some time, and now the schools uh, uh, are able to really focus on them at this point. Um, so a couple of things, we were thinking for a while that um, it would, they would need to be uh replaced from the ground up. Um, but thanks to the work of Mike Hale, uh, DPW, uh, in, in, he, the commissioner report. Which has shown us that uh, we will be able to refurbish and renovate the modular buildings. Um, and it'll cost about a half the amount of what replacing them would be. Um, so that is gonna, it's going to be, uh, and the other piece on that is not only uh less expensive, but also the timeframe. Uh, helps us quite a bit. And really the, what we want to continue to do at, at the, at Beaman and Plum Cove is. Address the modulars, then continue with the ongoing repair and maintenance, and then also uh, have, make sure we are, they're, they're safe and accessible buildings. So in terms of modulars, uh, if we go forward with repair renovation, then that can be done. It's a tight schedule, but we expect it to be done this summer. Uh, if we uh go the uh replacement route, route. It's uh over uh seven, seven point one million dollars and probably cannot be done until the summer of twenty twenty-three. And that also, of course, uh increases the risk of um, of escalation as well. The, these are structural and, uh, these are sort of envelope and system renovations. So um, sidings and roofs, we have leaks in some of them. We have critters that can access the, inside the walls and ceilings. Uh, this would address HVAC renovation, doors and windows, finishes, electrical improvements. Um, interiors are in good shape, uh, but the uh, essentially the envelope need work and what we didn't know until uh. Mike Hale commissioned the study was whether or not we could actually repair those instead of replace them, and we learned that we can repair them. Uh, another part of this in terms of maintaining these facilities would be to also do exterior painting. Both the Plum Cove and Beaman, and that can be done as well uh this summer. Um, so uh, that's sort of the quick overview uh really needed. You know, at some point in the next ten to twelve years or so, we will uh, you know, beginning engage in a process to replace both facilities. Uh, but cannot expect to do that with the MSBA um until well after the, we um. Have completed the current project and also want to make sure we're on a path where the city uh. Can, can finance them, and that again will be at least ten years and uh probably more than that. Uh, Jonathan Pope or Mike, do you want to add to that? Oh, Jonathan, you're muted.
I, I, I would just like to say that, you know, we spend a lot of time listening to people. Um, tell us that we need to maintain our buildings, and, and this is exactly what this is about. Um, it's providing a safe and at accessible um facility for our, our youngest students. Um, and um, it just, it needs to be done. It needs, we need to buy time until we are in a position to um. Uh, replace those uh facilities uh down the road, but that's not gonna happen right away as, as, as. Superintendent Lummis said, and um, I don't want to speak for Mike, but I've heard him speak many times in the last. Three or four years about the need um to um, to, to. Do some major work on these um modulars um because of the. The stress that it puts on the DPW trying to maintain them as, as safe uh facilities and uh, maybe Mike could uh. Uh, elaborate on that.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, just with regard to maintenance of these facilities, I mean, they're maintained. They're maintained regularly, but certain things go beyond what traditional, you know, daily maintenance can handle and. I've kind of urged the school committee over the past four or five years to have a plan to, so, you know, to. To either repair, replace, or whatever, whatever else may have happened. And again, we have a new school being built at the West Parish. And to that, the Veterans Campus, it'll house veterans in East Gloucester, so it takes the East Gloucester modulars and the Veterans modulars out of the equation. But it still leaves us with the two biggest elementary schools that have fifteen total modular classrooms. Um, it's, it's time. Uh, my freshman in college began her kindergarten career. In the Plum Cove modulars, and um, just as she's changed and aged, um, so have these modulars, and it is time to. Take a step towards repair or replace, and I think the repair um. Path that we're on is the best path for the district, um, and certainly for the students.
Thank you, Mike. Um, is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? This evening? All right, is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition? I saw, I saw the mayor logged on for two seconds. Mayor, can you hear me? I think she's trying to connect. Let's give her a second there. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Uh, or in opposition? Please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine. If you're watching on a device, you can, there is a raise hand button to be recognized to speak. Mayor, can you hear me? Mayor, can you hear me? All right, um, we'll move along to see if she logs in. Um, we'll keep going. Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There are no communications.
All right, do we have any councillor questions? Uh, Councilman Nolan.
Uh, Mayor Lex Burger does have his hand up.
There we go. Uh, Greg, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Um, Greg Berger, three eighty-one Essex Ave.
Go ahead.
And I'm calling it to speak in favor. I was on the school committee when we purchased these modulars, I don't know, twelve years ago, whenever it was. Um, but it's definitely, there's a need for it. We need safe facilities for the kids. And as Jonathan, Ben and Mike pointed out, it's not in the cards for at least a decade to do any new work. Uh, a new school for for Beaman and Plum Cove. So we definitely have to do this. So I fully support it as a resident.
Thank you, Greg. Um, Madam Clerk, there were no no communications. All right, um, Mayor Mayor Taken still trying to get on, but we'll go to councillor questions, and then we'll see if she she gave a little log on. Um, any other councillor questions? Councillor Gilman?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just have one quick question for either Superintendent Lummis or Chairperson Pope. Is the cost of painting of the exterior of the modulars, is that included in the loan order?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Belle. Um, any other councillor questions? All right, I'll try to give uh, Spathy a brief second. I know she's probably frustrated, for the better word, to try to get on and and speak this evening. All right, um, I'm sure she's here to speak in favor. Any other councillor question? Any other councillor question? Yeah, we can, we can suspend our rules, but I just wanted to make sure we gave her enough time to to log in. Um, all right, with that being said, uh, I'm going to close the public hearing and defer this to our Budget Finance Chair, Councillor Cox.
With no further discussion, I'm going to read the motion. See none. I recommend the City Council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Ordered that the City of Gloucester appropriate three million five hundred thousand dollars pay costs associated with the renovation and repair of module buildings at both the Beaman and Plum Cove Elementary School, including cost incidental or related there too. To meet this preparation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under in pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section seven, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, accept and expand any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay cost of the project. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issue of any bond or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter forty-four, Section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order, and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councillor Cox, seconded by Councillor Memhard, and I think the mayor is on. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Sorry, I was clicking on and off on the last one. I couldn't get on.
I know you were, but we just made a motion and it's been seconded, but we're without any objection, we'll suspend our rules to allow the mayor to talk. All right, uh, go ahead, Mayor.
Well, first of all, I um, let me see if I can work this video, kid. Am I on there? Well, nice. City Hall's behind me. First of all, thank you, everyone. Um, this is our last um, city council meeting. Well, um, hopefully, there's no emergencies. I just got off with the Board of Health. That was a long um, Board Health meeting, which would, well, and um, Council, I'm sorry, not Council-elect, Mayor-elect, uh, Verga was on there, and um, as we know, COVID is increasing, but we're doing the best we can. And for myself and those who will not be returning come January, let it snow, let it snow, let it snow. But thank you. Um, as you know, uh, Chairperson Steve LeBlanc, actually, I like to say Chairperson because there's always women then the next one. But the fact is, um, ten years, uh, you and I have been serving also with Council Cox and others. Um, it's just been great. I've done twenty years, thirteen, as a city councillor. And for those who are on that are new, it it, you know, it is gratifying. It's it's confusing, it's tough, but it is gratifying because you do make an effort and you do make a change. Um, and to, you know, my staff and administration, they've been great as far as for the past seven years. Like I said to people, it's a title. Uh, you know what? I'm not going anywhere. I I love this city too much. Um, a title, and I look at it as, um, you know, Super Bowl, I have seven rings, you know, seven years, and we move forward, but it doesn't mean we go away because the fact is that um, we, those of us who were born and raised here and stayed here for a reason because we love Gloucester. And we're at a time that, you know what, Gloucester is moving, and we need to be together and figure out what's best and what's the needs, and I will be around, um, and I will be strong, and I'll be able to speak as a panelist. No, but I'll be on, and I will help those new councillors who want it. Uh, those who won, congratulations. Those are returning. Um, my condolences. No, I'm only kidding. Um, congratulations. Thank you. Because um, it is, it is gratifying, and those who are leaving, uh, same, I'm sure that you're not leaving. You're still in the city doing things that, you know, you love the best and helping this community because that's who we are. And um, I just want to say again, thank you so much. I mean, twenty years with most of my staff because I appointed most of them. Um, um, thank you so much. I couldn't have asked for better staff. And um, hold your head high, because you know what? No one can take that away from us, city councillors. Myself, we were the city councils that, and we were also the ma- and the mayor and the staff who survived COVID. That's history, people. The city councils has to realize whether uh, we had our ups and downs, or we had arguments or whatever, it didn't come with the book, whatever. But we are the council, and we are, I am the mayor, and my administration is we survived the COVID. We were the first ones. No one can take that away from you. No one can take that away from you, that we had our first pandemic over a hundred years. And we survived, and we will survive because this community is strong and we'll work together. So God bless you all. Thank you. Happy holidays to everyone, and um, I will be seeing you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so we have a motion and a second for the modulars. Councillor Gilman, a discussion.
Thank you. Um, I will absolutely be supporting this. I'm the Ward Four City Councillor for both Beaman Memorial School and Plum Cove School. I've had the opportunity many times as recently as right before COVID to read um, in a lot of the modular classrooms at both schools as part of the first R program. And I always love the feel of the modulars because they're bright and cheery, and they're happy, and they really do the job for the the grades that are that are accommodated there. So I appreciate um, Mike Hale's effort in looking at the ease, the the least painful for our budget. Um, and I appreciate all that work and the work of of the school committee and Superintendent Lummis and so I obviously will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Uh, Council Holmberg?
Thank you. Yes, I will also wholeheartedly be supporting this, and I do want to say uh, the President of the Beaman PTO, Amanda Silva, couldn't join us tonight um, to voice her support. But she uh, wants wants us to know that she supports this as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Councilor Nolan?
Um, as much as I do support this tonight, I think the modulars are the best situation for the situation that the schools are in. But I know that living over Ward Five, we were very happy to see them be gone and end up with a new school that's fair and environmentally and safe for our children, and I I wish the best in the same for all our wards in the city.
Thank you, Sean. Mayor, I see your hand up. I'll circle back to you as soon as we get through our council. Um, Councillor Pat?
Yeah, just uh, um, uh, thank you to uh, um, not only the Superintendent Lummis uh, and Chair Chairman Pope, um, but also to uh, Director Hale um, for all his work on, you know, trying to maintain all of our city buildings. And obviously, uh, I I think one of the most important are those for our uh, for our children, for our students. And uh, these modules, uh, modulars are, you know, the, again, they're not supposed to be a um, a uh, normal um, part of a school for fifty years or whatever, but uh, we have what we have. And I want to thank them for putting the work in to uh, make this, um, you know, make them last for another ten years or whatever it's going to be, and I will be wholeheartedly supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Um, any other councillor discussion? Um, all right, I'm going to go real quick. Uh, I'm going to also support these. Um, being in the first R, I probably read in every single modular over the past several years. Uh, my wife's been in the school system for a bunch of years, um, over at Beaman, over at Plum Cove. She's currently at Plum Cove. Um, East Gloucester, veterans, I think she's been to um, everywhere but West Parish, I think. Um, she may have worked there also, but um, I've been in and outside. I've listened to stories not only from my wife, but from other friends that are in the school system. Uh, this is long overdue, and it's an excellent, um, you know, what Chairman Pope said earlier, you know, we hear about people maintaining our buildings, and this is exactly what we're doing to get the most life out of these buildings before we have to replace them. So this is a slam dunk for me, and I will be supporting this a hundred million percent. Um, Mayor Taken, before we take a vote, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, I wanted to say, first of all, councillors, uh, thank you. Um, we couldn't be doing this without having a sound budget. Um, even though people think it's a law that you have to pass a budget or you have to, but let me tell you something, we were in a state of emergency. The city council, myself, my administration, the leaders, we've not only passed a budget, um, we also um, left this city, those who are leaving, left the city in very good shape, that we could do these things. And when we started together in two, in two thousand fifteen, I wanted to make sure that I thanked Jim Distino. Um, you know, Chris Sicaranza, Enza, Nicole, Frank, all of us that come in and out and in and out to do these things, to thank them, because remember, we started the first, you have to save for our future, save for these buildings. We did the forty, the twenty, the twenty percent to put in back into the systems. And our DPW Director, Mike Hale, for looking at the buildings with Joe Lucido and all the DPW workers and the janitors. You know, we've come a long way. We've come a long way of repairing the buildings when they need to. This right here is showing how we all work together. Not only did we pass the budget, the school got a little bit of, you know, a percentage wise, but we have fiscal sound, we have uh, free cash coming in, free cash on that one. And yet you're thinking of the future of the children again. This is so important that they do have that, because anyone that's went in the buildings, actually, it was one of the councils back then, that when we first put them in. And now it's, you know, twenty years later, we need to change them, and um, perfect timing, perfect things. Yes, Councillor Nolan, we'd love to have all new schools everywhere. But that's right now, um, this is the best way to make sure that, to tell the other students, we do care about you, we hear what's going on, the teachers and the principals. We want to, and we need to do that. And we've couldn't have done it without this this council moving together to make sure that, you know what, and our team. When we said to them, you can't spend, and our CFO, I mean, we did it. We did it. And this is why we have this. Thank yourselves. You know, I, just because you and I, all of us, don't get along all the time, and we're all ups and downs, that's okay. We still succeeded as a team to get this city where we are. Not all of them, all of them, you, some of them are using their API money to pass their budget still. We already did twenty twenty-two. This is great. Thank you so much, and school committee, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so most of you are aware that I'm kind of doing things out of order here this evening. Um, Mayor wasn't here for most of the meeting, and I'm just making sure she gets to speak a little bit. Um, it is our last meeting, um, but she was on the Board of Health meeting earlier, and I just wanted to make sure that she was able to, we we didn't deny her of speaking this evening, so. Um, any other councillor discussion? All right, seeing none. Oh, there we go, Councillor O'Hara.
Thank you. I just want to uh, say that I'll be supporting this. It's extremely important that our students have a safe building, a comfortable building structure to to learn in, as well as the employees to teach in. Um, the safety of the students is of extreme importance, so I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. All right, with that being said, does everybody understand the vote? All right, it's been made by Councillor Cox, seconded by Councillor Memhard. I will call for the roll. Councillor Holmberg?
Yes.
Councillor LeBlanc? Yes. Councillor McCarthy?
Yes.
Councillor Memhard?
Yes, absolutely.
Councillor Nolan?
Absolutely, yes.
Councillor O'Hara?
Yeah.
Councillor Pat?
Absolutely, yes.
Councillor Cox?
Yes.
And Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Uh, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Thank you very much, councillors. Thank you, President LeBlanc.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate you being here tonight.
Appreciate your support of the schools, and also thank you to Mike and Jonathan. Um, and uh, really appreciate all the support from city councillors, those who who are leaving. Really appreciate working with you and how direct and honest and supportive you have been over schools. We'll miss you. But apparently you won't be going too far, so. Best of luck. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you're going to be hanging around, Mike, but if you're going to be hanging around, thank you anyway, but I don't know if you're going to be sticking around for the rest of the meeting. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
This is public hearing twenty twenty-one zero thirty-five loan order two thousand nineteen zero zero nine, a loan authorization amendment for the Convent Street Bridge over Walker's Creek in the amount of one point two million dollars from one point oh million dollars.
All right, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody to speak in favor of this this evening.
Good evening, Councillor LeBlanc, Mike Hale, Public Works. Um, this was before the council, probably two years ago. Um, the bridge that extends Convent Street across Walker Creek towards Essex was deemed in need of replacement from a DOT inspection. Um, we applied for the mass DOT small bridge replacement grant. We received just under five hundred thousand dollars for that, which had a city match of approximately five hundred thousand dollars as well. Um, that's the one million dollar original loan authorization. With the pandemic, um, you don't need to be in public works instruction or in the trades to realize that everything is more expensive today than it was two years ago. Um, building materials are through the roof, and that includes for a a bridge replacement project. Uh, steel is more expensive, and the lead time on the steel has been really difficult for a contractor to carry. So the total cost of the bridge um, is in excess of the million dollars that we have. Um, we went back to DOT, and they were gracious enough to give us an extra two hundred thousand dollars towards the project. And now this was our match to that to that two hundred thousand dollars, so we can get this bridge um, reconstructed starting uh, late winter and completing uh, probably mid to late summer.
All right, thank you, Mike. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor this evening? All right, if you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request to speak. And if you are watching on device, you can, there's a raise hand button to be recognized to speak. You can tap that. Um, if you'd like to speak in favor or in opposition, now is the time to do so. Anybody like to speak in opposition of this? All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are no communications.
Thank you. And do we have any councillor questions? Councillor Pat?
Yes, um, I just want to get a clarification, Mike. Uh, um, this is to go to one point two from one point oh. Uh, you had said DOT had done like basically five hundred, and the city had five hundred. And you got an extra two hundred from um, DOT, and then we're going to match with an extra two hundred. Does that not take us to one point four versus one point two? Um, I'm just a little, maybe it's just me not understanding the wording in the, uh, uh, loan order?
I, I believe that the original million dollar appropriation, um, the city was required to, authorize the full amount, even though that DOT was gonna be granting us just under fifty percent of that. It's like four hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars and some change. I don't believe the same condition was placed on the increase, so they did give us two hundred. We're adding two hundred to it, so the total project cost will be one point four, just around there. Um, but I, I, again, I'm not the one who puts the loan order language together. But I do not believe they required us to have the same verbiage in the increase as we did the original appropriation.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure that, that answer, that just makes it, it clarifies it for me. I'm sure that, uh, Councilor Cox has been in, on, on top of all of this and she wouldn't have let it slip by in the wrong way, so. I, I just wanted the clarification, you know, for maybe for the public that's watching, et cetera, so. That the, the real, the total cost will be actually one point four, not one point two. But it's just an increase of two hundred thousand that, that we're now, uh, having to, uh, come before us.
That is correct. And so the total cost to the local tax dollars is around seven hundred.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Uh, Council Memhard?
DPW Director, uh, Hale, you, you spoke to this at our budget meeting, but just for the sake of our constituents on this meeting or watching it later. There were concerns originally when the bridge abutments began to erode and collapse several years ago, that, uh, any modification in the design and rebuilding, reconstruction of the bridge here, uh, would, take appropriate, uh, consideration of erosion for the, uh, the, the flow of water going in and out on the tides. And I, I believe you addressed that in our meeting, but if you could restate that for the public, that would be helpful.
Certainly, counselor. Um, the original bridge abutments are, are cut stone and they are, parallel to the, to the channel, meaning that if you have, any significant water, like certainly when the tide's receding, so if any significant water, well, it, it can be coming as well, the tide could be coming. And if it can't fit through the opening, it eddies around the abutments and swirls. Um, when you have, extremely high tide, storm surge, or you have an excessive rain event on the discharge of Walker Creek, you could have an eddy on either side of the abutment, you know, the, the upstream side or the downstream side. And that's, that's what caused the abutments to fail, uh, a few years ago. And they're, they're kind of, they're, they're piecemealed back together again on the series of Jersey barriers and some fill. It's secure, but obviously not a long-term fix. We anticipated having this done a year ago, but, like everything else, the pandemic has put a lot of Public Works instruction on hold, um, from design to, you know, permitting, everything was delayed. So the new abutments will have essentially flared wings to them, allowing the water to, kind of be funneled more directly into them, the poured concrete. So I, I think you love, it's, it's engineered where the first one was probably just constructed.
Thank you very much.
Got any other councilor questions? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and, we defer this to our Budget Finance Chair, Councilor Cox.
Thank you. Barry, is it a bad time after ten years to tell you that I'm really bad at math?
That was a perfect time.
No. You actually supposed to not bring it up for another two weeks, yeah.
All right, fine. So I had to do that. All right. I, and whoever's idea was my last meeting to do five loan orders, I would like to. I recommend the city council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Ordered that loan order twenty nineteen zero zero nine, certificate of vote twenty nineteen one forty-three of this council approved August twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, authorizing the borrowing of one million dollars to pay costs of the complete replacement of the Concord Street Bridge over Walker's Creek, including the payment of, of all costs incidental or related thereto is amended in its entirety to provide as follows. Ordered that the city of Gloucester appropriates one million two hundred thousand to pay costs of complete replacement of the Concord Street Bridge over Walker's Creek, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under pursuant to master general law, chapter forty-four, section seven, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official of the city are authorized to apply for, accept and expand any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less than any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
Second.
All right, motions been made by Councilor Cox, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Uh, council discussion. Councilor Nolan?
I, I do support this. This is a, a great thing that's gonna be happening and for many reasons, one, the bridge is deteriorating. I, I do believe that part of the bridge is from the old route one, uh, one A that was brought here from Newbury years ago and is placed there, so it was definitely constructed, not engineered. But one of the things we did find after the failure from the storm is that we did have a house fire in Essex Avenue. And it ended up being the only way to, for commerce and for people to work back and forth from Essex to Gloucester. And we had to divert traffic over a bridge that wasn't necessarily DOT approved for the trucking and the amount of traffic, so. Not only will this be a great, uh, aesthetic thing for the neighborhood, it's definitely a safety thing for the entire island. And, uh, I will be supporting this tonight.
All right, thank you, Sean. Um, any other councilor discussion? Uh, I'm gonna be supporting this also. Uh, that bridge is pretty cool. You think about, our roads and the horse and buggy roads that we have. I mean, this is truly a horse and buggy road with the bridge. It's one lane. One of those bridges you cannot cross with two cars or car and a bike or anything like that. It's an asset to get back and forth to the, to different parts of that, of Sean's part of town. I've got, can, that some of my customers that live over there, so it's a pretty cool, pretty cool bridge. Um, very good, good chance to get up and go see it, so. I will be supporting this and, uh, that being said, Council Holmgren.
I'd like to thank the Lieutenant Governor, um, for kicking in, uh, the, uh, uh, extra two hundred thousand dollars. Mayor Taken, uh, just let me know that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Uh, Mike, how many of those bridges like that do we have? Is that the only one? I think we have another one just like that, don't we?
There'd be one more.
Right, I just was going through my brain.
Yeah, there's not very many like that. I mean, there's a few crossings, not over such a wide span, but there are some that may not be considered bridges. They may be considered culverts, but they're similar. Dennison Street has one. I mean, there's, there's a few out there.
Yeah, all right. Um, all right, any other councilor discussion? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and, uh, I already closed, and.
You already did that.
Cause, council discussion, uh, and call for the roll call. Uh, Council Holmgren.
Yes.
There you go. Council of the Blank, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
Council O'Hara?
Yeah.
Councilor Pet?
Yes, thank you, Mike Hale.
Councilor Cox?
Yes.
Councilor Gilman?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Thanks, Mike. Next order of business, please.
Public hearing twenty twenty-one zero thirty-six, loan order twenty twenty zero zero five, loan authorization amendment for security upgrades at Gloucester High School in O'Malley Innovation Middle School in the amount of two million dollars from one point six million dollars.
All right, this is our last public hearing this evening for everyone. I'm gonna open the public hearing and ask if there's anybody that would like to speak in favor.
I will start this, um, Council of Black. Uh, this was a, a product that was deemed necessary by Gloucester Public Schools, the school in the school committee, Gloucester Police Department and Fire Department, as, we see across the nation, school security is a very important and sensitive issue. The middle school and high school built during a time when school security wasn't well thought of. Uh, there wasn't a need for it as much as there is today. So trying to catch up to two thousand twenty-one times, uh, we began this process and again, with a add-on to the project, cost materials and unforeseen conditions, uh, the product's grown in scope slightly. From one point six, it's just under two. Um, the idea is if we get the extra four hundred thousand dollars, we can close this product out neatly. And there's a very small punch list of items left to do and the products are a hundred percent done. I do believe there'll be some tweaking of the space and access. It's, it's new for both buildings. If you go into the buildings, it may seem similar, but this, the flows changed. Um, some office space has changed. The resource, school resource officer's location has changed. And there's still some, um, outfitting that'll need to be done at another time, some technology, um, component that's not part of this. Uh, but this will get us to the completion of this project and make both these schools, as safe as we can make them right now. And I believe that Superintendent Loomis can weigh in on this. It's been a relatively smooth process, given the amount of disruption that both campuses have had to, um, deal with since the summer of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mike. Superintendent Loomis?
Thank you, Mike and, um, President LeBlanc. So, uh, Mike's exactly right. This has been, um, you know, it's, it's been, uh, kind of, uh, some rough going, you just, you know, just because it's extended pass where we wanted to and if, you know, we were on a tight time schedule in the summertime, um, but doors, windows, glass, we're still having, um, difficulty. It's just on a call today as we were talking about a punch list and some other matters. Still have some trouble with the last pieces of glass. Uh, and they, they could be a little bit wa, a little bit longer as well. So it really is, um, another, another example of the impact of the pandemic, um, on construction, on supply chain, um, and on escalation. Uh, it's not only, you know, gas and milk's going up, but it's also, uh, almost all construction prod, uh, products, so. But I will say this, combined with, um, the recent training we've been doing in our schools and drills, uh, which we're doing again and will do again, uh, later this year. And these two, uh, and securing these two, um, entryways at O'Malley and at, uh, and GHS. Um, and good work with the, um, police, police department. Um, you know, we, we, we feel, feel more and more confident that, these two schools and all our schools are, you know, um, preparing, uh, just in case. So, but this is important to, to wrap this up and as, uh, Mike said, due unforeseen circumstances and, and just the shifts from the original design of this, um, or when it was originally designed, I should say, um, we are seeking some initial funding to, to, to close it out.
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, anybody else that would like to speak in favor? All right, anybody would like to speak in opposition? Um, if you are calling in, you can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching, there is a raised hand button that you can press to request to speak also. If you'd like to speak in favor and or in opposition, now is the time to do so, please. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, do we have any communications?
There are no communications.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any councilor questions? All right, I'm sure we have all read our budget and finance minutes and that's probably why we don't have any questions. So good job, the budget and finance. Um, so I will close the public hearing and defer this to our Budget Finance Chair, Councilor Cox.
Hello, everybody. Um, I told you I was bad at math. There's only four public hearings and I said five, so, yeah. Anyway, I recommend the city council approve the following loan authorization as follows. Ordered that loan order twenty twenty zero zero five, certificate of vote twenty twenty zero seven five of this council approved May twelfth, twenty twenty, authorize the borrowing of one million six hundred thousand dollars to pay costs of security upgrades at Gloucester High School and O'Malley Innovation Middle School, including costs incidental or related thereto is amended in its entirety to provide as follows. Ordered that the city of Gloucester appropriates two million dollars to pay costs of security upgrades at Gloucester High School and O'Malley Innovation Middle School, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the mayor is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to master general law, chapter forty-four, section seven, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The mayor and any other appropriate official are of the city are authorized to apply for, accept and expand any grants or gifts that may be available to the city to pay costs of the projects. Any premium received by the city upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, less any such premium applied to the payment of cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with chapter forty-four, section twenty of the general laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like amount. Further ordered that the treasurer is authorized to file an application with the municipal finance oversight board to qualify under chapter forty-four A of the general laws, any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the municipal finance oversight board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
That's Councilor Cox's last motion as Budget Finance Chair, seconded.
Don't make me sad, Scott.
Good job. Um, motion's been made by Councilor Cox, seconded by Council Memhard, uh, for the discussion. The council of discussion.
Uh, Council Pet, that's us.
All right, Council Pet?
Yes, I just wanted to, uh, remind, uh, Councilor Cox that, uh, uh, she's not that bad at math. That fifth one loan order is a placeholder in case there's an emergency loan order necessary in the next two weeks and we have to have an emergency meeting. So it wasn't, it wasn't you not doing correct math. It was done on purpose, I'm, I'm sure. And we appreciate you standing by for the next two weeks for your, for your excellent experience.
Thank you, Barry. Any other councilor discussion before we vote? All right, seeing none, uh, we'll call for the roll. Council Holmgren?
Yes.
Councilor LeBlanc, yes. Council McCarthy?
Yes.
Council Memhard?
Yes.
Councilor Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yeah.
Council Pet?
Yes.
Council Cox?
Yes.
And Council Gilman?
Yes.
Motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, Mike, Ben, Jonathan? Thank you guys for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Great job to all.
Thank you, counselor. And just, I'd like to just say, um, thank you to the five councils who will not be in the auditorium come January. It's been a pleasure working with you. Um, I'm sure I'll see you around. You'll be missed. The four remaining and the five new. I look forward to January and the times after that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. Council Gilman?
I'm sorry, just something very quickly. I just wanted to, um, thank Jonathan Pope. He's served this city for many, many, many years and here he is on this long meeting and, um, on behalf of all of us, you've been awesome, so thank you.
Thank you, Belle. Jonathan?
Thank you, thank you.
How many meetings did you have today? Is this, is this your second one?
Yes, we negotiated.
Yes, we negotiated, uh, a contract, uh, an tentative agreement with, uh, one of our ass me groups just before we came here. And, uh, and there was another meeting in the morning. So, um, you know, I appreciate, um, all of the hard work that gets done on on both sides, the school side and the city side. And, um, I think the, um, you, you, we should all, as the mayor said, should all be proud of the work you've done and, um, I appreciate it. So thank you.
We appreciate you. Yeah, you've done a tremendous job. Um, enjoy your family, enjoy your time off and um, let's get together soon and have a cup of coffee or however you want to call it. I mean, that's about the old times, bud.
Um, let us know when that party gets rescheduled.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thanks.
All right, uh, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
Next order is business for council vote, decision to adopt special city council permit twenty twenty one dash zero zero four Essex Avenue number sixty five dash seventy three map two seventeen lots twenty and twenty two. Gloucester zoning ordinance sections five point five point two for low layer requirements exception, five point three one four use allowance and special permit procedures for a marijuana establishment in the EB district.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Um, obviously, this is something that we voted on a few weeks ago. We're all familiar with this. Counselor Gilman.
Yeah, just, just a note on discussion. Um, this P and D Standing Committee has just done an awesome job on, um, Mary Jen, thank you. Um, the detail of this motion to adopt was just so specific and it's really a tribute to, um, the detail that you put behind all of this. So I'll obviously be supporting this motion to adopt, but I just wanted to say thank you.
You too, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the roll. Uh, Counselor Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes, yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
Yeah.
Counselor Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion to adopt passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
This decision to adopt special city council permit twenty twenty one dash zero zero five whistle stop block whistle stop way number nine map twenty four lot fifty one Gloucester zoning ordinance section two point two point two point three and section five point three one to construct a retail marijuana establishment in the EB district.
Entertainer motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, I will, uh, call for the roll call. Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara.
No.
Counselor Pet.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counselor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion passes to adopt on a roll call vote of eight in favor, one opposed. All right, thank you, everyone. Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
For council vote, the City Council acceptance of the tax increment financing TIF process modification.
All right, and I will entertain a motion to accept the tax equipment finance process modification proposal dated November nineteenth, twenty twenty one. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Seconded, moved, third, fourth, last meeting. Woo! Um, all right, everybody understand what we're voting on this evening? All right, um, all right, so we'll have, uh, we'll go with the roll call. Uh, Counsel Holmgren.
Yes.
Counselor LeBlank, yes. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Memhard.
Yes.
Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yeah.
Counsel Pat.
Yes.
Counselor Cox.
Yes.
And Counsel Gilman.
Yes.
All right, motion passes on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. Uh, Madam Clerk, next order of business, please.
This counselor's request to the mayor.
All right, uh, any counselors requests to the mayor? Um, Counselor Cox.
Um, I've noticed for the last few months that the calendar on the city website on the landing page is not, um, it has no information on it. In order for me to figure out what the Board of Health meeting link was for their Zoom this evening, I had to go to Agendas and, um, and and look it up and then type it into my iPad. Uh, and you typically the the meeting links are, um, very long and complicated. So it's easy to mess it up. And if it was in the calendar, um, if all of our meetings were in the calendar, um, and having live links to click on to them as opposed to trying to retype it in from an agenda that's a PDF, uh, I think it would be extremely helpful. I don't know why we've gotten away from using, um, the calendar at the bottom of the the main page. Um, but I know there's several meetings tonight. When I just clicked on December fourteenth, it didn't have anything on the calendar. So, um, I'd really like to see that utilized better. Um, and another thing, uh, Duncan Street has been repaved for, uh, at least two years. Um, I was told that the Ts and Ls would get paved on it or painted on it um, after they did the restructuring on the parking plan. And, um, that's happened. The kiosks are trying to be installed and be productive. So I'm not sure why we haven't painted those lines. Um, several of our, um, uh, renters and, um, people that are utilizing the businesses on Duncan Street have been given tickets because they're not parked in the appropriate spot. And without those Ts and Ls, it's very hard to, uh, try to figure out where people are parking because there's a notorious illegal parking spot up the street that throws everybody off. So, um, if that could be done, that would be great. Sooner the better on that one.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
Any other counselor requests to the mayor or any follow-ups or anything, or Counselor, Counsel Memhard, then Counsel Nolan?
No, it's not a request to the mayor per se, but, uh, thank you for all the support from the administration, uh, accommodating me using, uh, East Gloucester School Auditorium for Award One Community Meeting with the new, uh, developer at one sixteen East Main Street, Mark Trainos. Uh, he was interested in introducing himself to the neighbors, uh, Joel Favazza, his attorney, and he had his blaster there. The blaster was the one who did most of the conversation, most of the talk and the answering of questions. But, uh, as you, as you all know and remember, um, this project was conditioned back in, uh, two thousand eighteen by the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Concom, uh, with no blasting in consideration in particular of the underground fuel tanks at the, uh, Mondello's Richdale Gas Station, or three tanks that were installed in nineteen seventy or so. But the the developer, uh, as far as I can gather, got a very clear message from the attendees there, both people who were in person as well as people who attended uh, virtually via Zoom and and, uh, the developer was helpful in setting that up, making it happen and brought coffee and donuts for everybody. But, uh, you know, I I think he got a good lay of the land and the neighborhood will be just looking forward to an extended period of drilling and hammering, but but not, uh, blasting. And it was a good meeting and I I I felt constructive about introducing him to the neighbors and clarifying for him the history of this project, which he's taken over. But thank you all for your support on that.
Thank you, Scott. Good job. Um, Counselor Nolan.
Uh, I have nothing for the request. I I do want to thank the mayor for her time, um, in her public service. I do want to thank every counselor um, here tonight. I've I've served with a lot of you and, um, I'm going to miss you. It's not out with the old and in with the new. Um, it's a team and I I look forward to everybody that that's presently on the council and to be work with them before and after. Um, everybody's done a great job and I I want to thank everybody, uh, each and every one of you.
Thank you, Sean. Um, Counsel McCarthy.
Yes, it's ending a two-year learning experience for me. I'd like to thank everybody that's, uh, helped me as a new counselor and, um, wish the counselors that are staying good luck and also wishing the counselors that are leaving good luck. It's been a pleasure working with the Clerk's Office. Joanne, thank you for all your help um, over these last couple of years and I just, uh, uh, wish everybody good luck and happy holidays and happy new year.
Thank you, John. Same to you, too. Um, Counselor Pat.
Okay, um, again, thank you to, uh, all of the counselors, those that are, uh, departing and um, those that are remaining. Thank you to everyone in the administration. Um, um, not only the mayor's office, but, uh, um, all the departments, the, uh, uh, the DPW, the, uh, uh, the fire department, the police department, uh, the harbor master, the board of health. Um, you know, everyone, uh, and obviously special thank you to Joanne and the staff in the clerk's office, uh, for having at least helping me as a brand new counselor, uh, to navigate through everything and, um, it's been quite a, uh, an experience for me and, uh, I'm not going anywhere. I'll still be here in the community one way or another, helping out hopefully. Uh, but, uh, hopefully everybody will have a safe and happy holiday season, uh, going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Counsel Holmgren.
I, yes, um, I am just very grateful, uh, for having had the opportunity to serve with all of you. And I certainly didn't expend it, it's expect it to end this way, uh, on Zoom, but, uh, I just, uh, I want to thank, um, my colleagues, current and former, uh, Joanne and the City Clerk's Office, Kenny and the Auditor's Office, uh, the Mayor's Office, all city administration employees, uh, board commission and committee members. Thanks to all of the engaged constituents, uh, who made our meetings interesting and good. And, uh, I I want to wish you all a happy and healthy holiday season as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Um, Counsel Gilman.
I just wanted to piggyback on what people have said. Um, I see that Mayor Taken is still on the call. So in case she's hearing us, we gave you, um, grand citations at the beginning of the meeting and I hope you watch it tomorrow. Um, we have a lovely card that, um, the Clerk's Office and the City Council also all signed with notes to you and I'm sure you'll get that tomorrow. Um, but, um, just on, I just have really enjoyed working with the five counselors that are leaving. Um, we've learned a lot from each other. We've been through a lot and, um, I will always think of you, um, with positive thoughts as we move forward and we hope to see you again. And, um, thank you and, um, thank you to city staff that, um, for all your support.
Thank you, Val. Um, anybody else? Counselor Cox.
I was doing my request to the mayor and I totally forgot to sign off, I guess. Um, I I really enjoyed this experience. I mean, ten years of my life spent with Steve LeBlank. You know, that was a long time.
Remember?
Uh, um, we, we had not, I I know earlier when we were reading through the citations and, um, and Margaret, you know, kept talking about how many meetings and time away from fan friends and family. It it's not all negative. It's, it is a lot of time away, but there are a lot of accomplishments. Um, Steve and I got elected the same year and we have shared these experiences for the last ten years. But being able to go have, uh, dinner at the hotel and and seeing what that has brought to our community. When we started in January, um, that was the first thing that we had to do and it was such a huge undertaking. And we learned so much from that process and it was just, it's crazy to think that that was ten years ago. Um, it's such a staple in our lives now and the things that we've been able to, um, accomplish, uh, even as something like a parking meter or, you know, getting somebody handicap spot and, you know, just helping our fellow residents. It it's very rewarding. Um, I'm really going to miss it. I am a firm believer in, um, rotation, uh, ten years is a long time to be in a position and I think it's important to step back and, um, assess your accomplishments and your failures and, um, and let other people take a shot at being a city counselor. So everybody that has served on the council in the last ten years, it was, um, it was very nice to serve with you. Um, Joe Schleno, um, you know, there's Paul Lundberg. There's been a lot of people that have been transitioned out and, um, we're still friends. We're still, you know, in touch and I look forward to seeing, um, most of you around town. So I appreciate it. And I I look forward to continuing to see, uh, the City Clerk's Office, the administration and, um, City Auditor's Office. So I'm going to miss you guys, but we'll still see each other. So thank you.
We we have some really good teachers, Melissa.
Yeah, yeah, we did. Um, Jackie Hardy in particularly. Um, I was thinking about her the other day and the things that I learned from her was amazing. And Counsel McCarthy, I know you've only been here for two years, but damn, I learned a lot from you.
Yeah.
So I I I really appreciate, um, your, your.
Forward thinking.
Um, yeah, I, it, it was just, it was refreshing to have somebody come in and like really grab the reins and, um, teach me something after eight years. So it it was very, very much a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you. It's nice of you to say.
And Val, you should be commended for what you've managed to pull P and D out of. Um, you know, I served two years on P and D and I I gotta say, it wasn't the most pleasant experience for me because I'm more of a numbers person. And we, we had a lot of lawsuits in the beginning and you've managed to pull us out of that and your meetings might be a little bit longer, but damn, it's worth it if we can avoid those lawsuits. So kudos.
Thank you.
Awesome.
And I certainly hope you make Scott Memhard Chair of Budget and Finance. As the only returning member, he deserves that.
Um, I talk about Jackie all the time. Um, Val.
Yeah.
Do, go ahead.
I just, I just have something funny to to that I wanted to just, um, just say before we close. And, um, this was a tradition that Carolyn Kirk started in two thousand eleven and then it got sent to Greg Berger in two thousand and fifteen and then to Melissa Cox in two thousand and sixteen, Sean Nolan in two thousand and seventeen. I inherited it in two thousand and nineteen and I would like to give this to Scott Memhard for two thousand and twenty-two. But this is a bunch of horrified nine city counselors. And the tradition, from what I understand from those of you who have kept asking, like, what is this tradition? Is something to do with people that are lucky enough to be running unopposed and they don't have to go through this crazy time in the election. So there are actually nine counselors here. There are four women and five men, and that was more symbolic of how the council was back in two thousand and eleven. So I just want the counselor to know, although this is awkward in a Zoom call, that I'm going to be presenting this to Scott Memhard um, at the inauguration on January first and ask that you continue the tradition of whatever this means. So anyway.
All right, thank, thank you, Val. I don't know how much of a tradition it is. I ran unopposed three years. I've never even seen the thing before, but you you can have, you can have your tradition. Um, but anyway.
Don't be bitter, Steve.
I'm not bitter. I I trust me.
Oh, it it got hidden in the back of my closet for, um,
Anyway, anyway. Um, so ten years is a long time. I'd like to thank, and I I'm sure everybody spoke, but I'm going to speak for probably a minute longer. Um, this administration, the past administration. This administration, the past administration, the future administration, you know, let's see, is Greg still on the call? I don't see him. But you know, Greg, if you need anything, we've got a lot of knowledge that we can help you with in the future. Spathier, Carolyn, you know, those are the, Carolyn and Spathier are the mayors that I've worked with over the 10 years. You know, it made some really good friendships with this council, past councils, department heads, employees, constituents. You know, Anne Margaret and Melissa talked about, you know, your endless hours of going out, you know, you, you go out to dinner with your wife and you end up having dinner with your wife and a constituent. You go out to have a beer with your buddies and you end up talking for hours on end with constituents. You're on the golf course in the dentist chair. I mean, it's, it's a 24 seven job, believe it or not. I wouldn't change any other thing in the past 10 years. I've been reminiscing with my son the past few days. We work together and he's 22. So, I'm thinking, man, I've been a city counselor almost half his life. And it's just crazy to think about of all the things that we've accomplished. And, and especially with Melissa, we came in, we were as green as they came, you know, and look at us. We, we're running the council meetings. You know, we used to, we used to rib each other about, you know, council wife and council husband. But you know what? After the past 10 years, we've gotten into fights, we've gotten into arguments, we haven't talked to each other for days. Yeah, it is the council marriage. Basically, it's, you know, that's what it's about. You know, so I just want to thank everybody. Joanne, you've been amazing. Grace, Danielle, Marie, Sherry, Dana, Linda, you know, Dana was a part of the clerk's office for years. She was our clerk committees. She was our 10th city counselor for a number of years. She's taught me quite a bit. And, you know, all the constituents. Patty Page, Patty Amaro, Lyndon Callister, you know, you go down the list of all these people that show up. Mary Ann Boucher. How fitting is this that all the meetings you've come to, you're on the panel with the last city council meeting? So, it's a pleasure to have you sit with us. I'm honored to know you. I'm blessed that we get to, to talk to every one of you every single meeting, reaching out to us, making sure you're on our, we're on our toes, you're on our heels. That's what makes a good city is communication. You know, I've said this in the past, we don't always, we're not always going to agree with each other, whether we're city council or city council and constituents, but we all live in a city. We all do this because we love our city. The council's up here because we love our city. We don't do this for the money. I've lost money working for the city council. I do this because I love my city. You guys come to the city council meeting and, and explain things to us and talk to us, make sure we do things right. Not because you're getting anything out of it, because you want to make sure you, you love your city and you want to make sure that you're part of things. And sitting back and complaining from the couch and not doing anything is not going to get you anywhere. So, kudos to all of you guys that have attended every city council meeting, every P and D, every school committee meeting, O and A. I mean, they go on and on and on. So, kudos to you guys for being on top of things and involved. I'm sure I'm going to be like that in the future. I've already reached out to the, the new mayor, asking to be on a board. And I'm going to stay involved and informed. And, you know, it's been an amazing ride. I'm sorry to see it go, but I'm so looking forward to my next chapter in life and hanging out with my family and my grandkid and, and everything else. The future that holds for all of us. So, thank you, everyone. It's been a pleasure. Personally, working with you as colleagues and as peers, you know, John, I've had an amazing amount of respect for you when you are on the police force and to be able to call you a peer and a colleague is just, it's just awesome, you know? I've always looked up to you and, and it's nice to be able to look, to talk to each other as peers. And, you know, it's not like, oh, man, I'm talking to the cops. I gotta be, I gotta be cool, man, you know? Not like that, but you know what I mean. So.
We gotta get out for that drink.
It's been a blessing. Yeah. Joanne, thank you. You've been amazing. And I, I'd never in a million years would I have thought that I'm running city council from my kitchen table for the past
Year and a half.
Almost two years, whatever it's been. It's just mind-boggling. So, thanks for everybody's help. Thanks for everybody's input. And I'm going to stop at that. I think I'm done. I know. All right, anybody else?
Steve.
Yes, okay. There we go.
Thank you. Thank you. I just, sure, thank you. I just wanted to thank Mayor Taken for his service to our city. Counselor Blank, Steve, thank you. You've done a great job for the past two years. Counselor Cox, Counselor Holmgren, Counselor Pat, thank you. You've done an awesome job. Counsel McCarthy, I, I can't say enough as, as others have said, you are a absolute class act. The police chief, you're the most caring person, most concerned for, for the citizens of Gloucester. I sincerely mean that and, and respect you and thank you. I want to thank all the, all the citizens of, of our wonderful city with some Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year's. We're here to serve you. Also, as all city employees, you've done a great job through an extremely rough year. Thank you. On a personal note, I want to thank all the blood donors who have participated at the Magnolia Library. Looks like we're going to exceed over 1,000 units this year. 200 units were, were just sent to the tornado-stricken states of Kentucky and, and Iowa. They're such a shortage, so keep it up. And most importantly, I want to thank the men and women of our armed forces, including Coast Guard Station Gloucester. These men and women protect our freedom 24/7, 365. And without them, we wouldn't be doing what we're doing. So, thank you. Thanks again, Steve.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, everyone. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved.
What if we don't want to adjourn, Steve?
You guys can stay. I'm going to go.
I'm going to hang up on you, Scott.
I'm going to go pour myself a glass of bourbon and chillax the rest of the night. So, I don't know about you guys. All right, we have a motion and it's been moved and seconded. Counselor Holmgren?
Yes, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Counselor LeBlanc signing off, yes. Counselor McCarthy?
Yes, it has been my pleasure to work with you all.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes, thank you, one and all.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes, thank you all.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yeah.
Counselor Pat?
Yes, and Steve, that'll be a glass of Basil Haidens to share with you.
Thank you, buddy. Counselor Cox?
Yes, final, final sign off is coming with mixed blessings. So, shot a fireball for you, Steve.
Thanks. We should have the little walkie-talkies like they do down the fire squad. Counselor Gilman?
Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you, Val. And before we adjourn, Kenny, thank you. Chris, thank you. Appreciate your time staying here for the evening.
Joanne.
Joanne, thank you. And I'm sure I'm, I'm going to make my way through city offices over the next couple of weeks and say my personal goodbyes. So, motion to adjourn has been passed on a roll call vote of nine in favor, zero opposed. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.